We do not have any visitors wishing to speak, nor any written communication tonight. Special committees, we do have reports from Mr. McLaughlin and the safety committee.
Yes, and luckily, Mr. Bellisle, our chairperson is here in case I forget anything. But our safety committee met for two hours on the evening of Wednesday, November 28th. And the committee is focused on polishing up the procedures, policies, and facilities that keep our students safe, which is obviously a top priority of the district. The committee has full representation from all district stakeholders, which will include, we have parents, teachers, students, administration, and also our local law enforcement and safety management professionals, as well as the Bosse's Health, Safety, and Risk Management Senior Coordinator. So we have a very broad kind of representation on our committee. The building safety plans have been updated and shared with the State Education Department, as well as the Fire, Police, and Emergency Services of Amherst. And we discussed various topics related to the building's safety and the future completion of a vulnerability and safety assessment by NYSAR, which is what we were talking about earlier. And we will review those findings during our spring meeting. The majority of our committee focused on a table talk activity, which was facilitated by Emergency Management Services and the Police Department. And this was an activity that took about 75 minutes of our meeting. It was, it allowed us to review our emergency plan if we needed it, if there were an intruder in our buildings, and kind of put us in the middle of some sort of emergency response situation. We separated into, we had a district committee representation, then we had our high school and middle school buildings represented, and then we had our elementary level buildings represented. And we, what we found was that we would like to actually conduct this activity in each of the buildings, but we were very happy with our findings and how we, we kind of were very well aligned across the board. So that was very interesting to find. So our final takeaway was that we would like to, again, as I said, take this activity to each building level. And finally, we want to review the NYSAR assessment that will be completed throughout the winter.
Has that started yet, that vulnerability study?
No, I don't need to start it just yet.
They're doing it this winter?
It takes a few months to complete. There's a vulnerability and a security assessment that'll be done hand in hand. And Dr. Mr. Ohado is going to fold it into some of the capital work that's being done too, so that there's a full picture of everything that's going on and what may need to occur or what may already be planned for.
Anyone else have any meetings, committees, whatever? All right. For reviews for now.
Thanks. Mrs. Wazinski is going to give us an update on the bus GPS app that we piloted last year. See what our findings are, and then we have a recommendation moving forward. So Mrs. Wazinski.
Thank you, thank you. So tonight, we're going to talk briefly about our FirstView Transportation GPS app, which as Mr. Penelope mentioned, we did pilot last fall. We will talk about a couple different areas. We'll talk about the pilot program itself, the feedback that we've received, well, some highlights of the app, what the response was from FirstStudent, and what our next step will be. So first of all, I'm going to talk about the pilot program. It occurred during the fall of 2016, and we did include parents and administrators. And they were actually able to use the app live during this time. I did speak with several of the parents and an administrator who participated in the pilot, wasn't here. And a lot of the people who started this from the beginning are no longer here, so I wanted to kind of dig back and find out how it started and what some of the feedback was. Received both positive and negative comments on the app. I spoke with FirstStudent as well, and they indicated that they had made some adjustments to their practices, and they feel that the adjustments that they've made will alleviate some of the concerns that were brought up during the pilot and that were reported by the users of the app. Originally, our plan was to roll out the app for our parents either in the spring of this past school year, the spring of '17, or this past fall of '20, this past current fall of '17. But because of the administrative turnover, I was brand new, I didn't know the history of the app, we decided to hold off a little bit until we could make sure that we had all of the facts and make the recommendations moving forward. So some of the feedback that we received from the parents, some could see the information in the afternoon, but not in the morning. Some felt that what they saw was accurate, others felt that it wasn't. We had a comment that it was glitchiest first, but as time went on, it got better. One parent commented that we shouldn't roll it out to our parents until it's working perfectly and all of the glitches are solved, that it would cause more frustration than it would be worth to roll it out with the glitches. Data often wasn't available. And while there were several issues when this parent contacted FirstStudent to let them know about the issues, there was always a reason for them, but the issues were numerous. On the administrative side, we found that we were able to see one bus at a time, which was helpful to know when the buses were coming in in the morning or where the bus was in the afternoon, to know when it would arrive. But we felt it would have been more helpful to be able to see all the buses. You know, they should kind of converge on the building, and they should all depart, and should know where they all are at once. And we didn't have that ability. And we also felt that it would be a worthwhile tool if the kinks could be worked out and the information provided to us would be accurate. Some of the highlights of the app. From a parent, her child was in middle school, and the bus app is out of sight of her house. So she felt it was very beneficial to know when the bus had dropped her child off at the corner, so she knew when he'd be arriving home. When it worked, it worked well, and it seemed accurate. It was very user-friendly, easy to use, easy to navigate. And it was reported that it was helpful to see where the bus was on the route, so that there was an estimated time of when the student would be dropped off at the house. On the administrative side, again, we felt that if we could see all of the buses arriving at once and all of the buses being dismissed, that it would be a helpful tool in coordinating transportation, both in arrival and dismissal. So we then spoke with FirstStudent to find out what their thoughts were. They actually ran the pilot, and they met with our parents and our administrative administration who used the app in the fall. So they had received the feedback already, so we wanted to know what changes or enhancements they had made in the past year or so that would have alleviated or addressed some of the concerns that were raised. They felt that they've provided increased training to our actual bus terminal employees, not across all Western New York or even company-wide, but specifically to the individuals that would be monitoring our apps and our routes, that they individually had received additional training, and that they're in the process of hiring additional staff. Part of the problem with the data not being present on the app is that it wasn't being updated at the terminal in a timely manner, because they felt that they just didn't have the staff to be able to do it. So FirstStudent feels that if they hire additional staff and continue to provide training, that that will alleviate some of those concerns. One issue that is remaining that cannot be alleviated, our morning routes are often shared between drivers. So when a student is assigned to a bus, the bus route, the parent is given access to that bus route. If our buses are running late, the drivers will radio to each other, and another bus might pick up a certain street. And there's no way for the information to be switched timely enough, so that if a second bus was coming down your street, you would be able to see it on your app. So the bus would be at your door, and you'd be monitoring on your app a bus that is elsewhere or running late. And unfortunately, FirstStudent said there's no way that they can address that. That will never be able to be fixed. They did offer for a second pilot, so we have the ability to participate in a second pilot. They said that they would run it like they did the first time. We could have whoever we wanted involved and go through the process to see if the training and increased staff alleviate enough of the concerns that we would be comfortable moving forward. So finally, our next step, first and foremost, is we want to make sure that we're updating the board and the community on where we landed with the pilot and why we hadn't rolled it out as we had originally planned. Our next step will be to hold a transportation committee. Being new, I haven't met with the transportation committee yet, so this will give me an opportunity to not only introduce myself and get to know the people that are participating in the committee, but also find out what the goals and objectives are for the committee, talk about the strengths of the committee and what they want to see accomplished, as well as discuss the second pilot and how we want to move forward with it. Planning to call the transportation committee together just after the holidays, so sometime in January, and then we can decide where we're going to go from there.
Can I ask a question? The issue that FirstStudent says they can't be addressed, if, you know, somebody, another driver picks up a route, you know, mid-route kind of thing, did FirstStudent have an idea of how often that happens?
They did not. It really is based on the needs of the driver if the, if a bus is running late. I did speak with Ms. Dagler, who is our transportation coordinator, and she said that it's very common and quite consistent, it's probably two times a week, minimally, that that happens. So it's very common, it's not the exception. It's not a rule, but it's not an exception either.
Interesting. Two times a week, like on one route?
Yeah.
Kind of thing, you know, so it's not all over the place, but it might be one route.
Right. And it tends to be a little bit later in the morning. We have one fleet of buses that does all four runs, so by the time we're picking up from the middle school, maybe even the second elementary, if they're running, you know, you get late in the first run, by the time you're at the end, you may be a little bit more late. And in the interest of providing good customer service, making sure our students get to school on time, they help each other, and they radio to each other if someone's early or empty, close by, they'll go get the kids, which is great to get our kids to school on time, but would not help us keep accurate data on our apps.
Yeah, and my personal experience, being, you know, one of the second elementaries, I, I, you know, can only think of maybe a couple of times that we had a different driver show up because the other one, the bus broke down or something like that. But I think that's pretty, you know, extraordinary type of activity.
And I mean, it might be in a specific area, it might be more for the middle schools, the last run. I didn't get that specific into the details. Those are certainly questions that we could delve into more if we move forward with the second pilot. My biggest concern was that she's like, "I'll never be able to fix that for you."
Right, that's a big issue, yeah.
I would have rather had, we're working on it.
Right.
But...
Thank you.
Okay.
So as you may recall, last fall, we talked about this, and the pilot was ongoing, and I think we were optimistic we would roll it out last spring or potentially even this fall. So we just want to make sure we're being, closing the loop and communicating publicly and letting folks know that we're not abandoning the idea, but we don't think we're there yet, and we don't want to roll it out if it's going to cause harm in the good. So it also dovetails nicely with an opportunity that Mrs. Wazinski has to meet with the transportation committee and pull them back together and see what their goals and objectives are moving forward, and this certainly will be one of the topics of discussion. So there's more to come on this, but probably not in the, this school year future, but it's not a, it's not a dead issue, but we're not going to see something in the immediate future this school year like we had anticipated. So thank you. I wanted to give the board a brief update on the superintendent's student cabinet. Just to let you know, it's a group that's still alive and well. As you know, it was born out of Ann Ward's, our high school social studies teacher's Fulbright scholarship experience, where she went and studied in the Netherlands and specifically focused on student governance models. And when she came back, was, you know, really interested in how our students are involved in governance within our school district. At one point, there was some discussion of whether or not we would have a student representative on the board. Through some great discussion, it evolved into what we now call the Superintendent Student Cabinet. So we've started year two. We have representatives from all different groups and cross-sections of our high school. We went to our elected leaders from all our different organizations, as you may recall, from last year when we presented this as a new initiative. So we had, well, two and a half, three meetings. I'll explain so far this year. We met in September, which was really introductions of new members, laying the ground rules, the expectations, setting our meeting schedule, you know, a lot of the logistics for successful implementation throughout the year. We then met in October again. We asked each student to bring a list of topics that they might want to see on the agenda. So we talked about a few topics, and then spent most of our time talking about, at that time, the upcoming Challenge to Change program, and we solicited involvement from them in that program. So then the half-meeting we had a couple weeks later was a week prior to the Challenge to Change. So we had some students in the cabinet that were change agents. They were trained to help facilitate the discussion. We had some students in the cabinet that attended, just to be participants. And then those that weren't in either of those categories actually helped us as student ambassadors of the district for the seven schools and the town of Amherst that were visiting. So they would meet out front of Damon, and when the buses would pull up, they had signs, you know, "Kenmore West," and when they got off the bus, they would take them where they needed to go and, you know, introduce them and get them situated. So we had a planning meeting for the folks that would serve in that ambassador capacity to, you know, make signs and give them T-shirts and assign roles and responsibilities. So it was nice to see a majority of folks involved in that. And then our next meeting, because of the upcoming holidays, is in January. We have a lot of things that we have on our list. There's some interest in them getting involved with the Tigers Den Food Pantry. We've talked about everything from a senior coffee cart fundraiser to potential alternates in the capital construction project. So it's really a high-powered group that's tackling some important issues. So that's really, I just wanted you to know where we stand with that group, and we have opportunities in our board topics throughout the year for updates. This one, as you know, our kids are pretty busy, so I didn't want to burden any of them with being here physically for the meeting, but future updates will include, you know, Mrs. Ward, Mr. Pigeon, myself, and some of our students. But we've really just scratched the surface this school year, but I'm excited about what they bring to the table and the ideas that they have. And of course, we ask them to meet at 7:45 in the morning, and it's great to see them make that commitment to getting there early. So they've really, I guess, bought into what we're looking to do and hearing what they have to say.
Is there anything surprising on their topic lists?
Surprising? No. I mean, not for those of us that, you know, work with kids every day. You hear, you hear a lot of things, but I guess the surprise is how mature and intellectual they are, and that's a pleasant surprise. Not that I didn't expect it from our kids, but, you know, talking about things that, you know, renewable energy sources that we can include in the capital project, you know, things along those lines, and questions they have about things that they hear or read about in the papers to delve deeper. You know, it's not just superficial conversations. So I guess it's surprising in a good way, because there's a lot of depth to what they're bringing to the table.
They just want more recess or something.
Right, right. Right. They really want to talk about, like, you know, important things that are going to make a difference. So, so that's the summary of the two and a half meetings that we've had. And then the last piece, I'll just grab the keyboard, is our exit poll survey. So as we get ready to kick off budget season, one of the good ways for us to start is by reviewing the results from our exit poll from last year. So I worked with Ms. President Steinle and Mrs. Sosenko, who is on our Communications Department from Erie One Bosse's, to compile the finalized exit poll report, which all of you have a copy of. And then we put together a summary, you know, a couple-year snapshot of the results. And then we'll talk about the next steps relative to budget development from there.
So, Mark and Jess, so we started this four years ago. You've probably have taken it, I assume. It was more just to get a feel as we approach budgetary time, you know, we're getting ready to start our budget, and if we have to make tough choices, or we have things we can add or what have you, this kind of gives us a feel for, for helping us, I guess, guide us, you know, is what maybe what the public is thinking. And while this presentation, you know, the presentation gives us a three-year snapshot, even going back over the fourth year, the results are actually very consistent across the responses and what have you. So, I mean, if you look here, in terms of, like, even the vote, I mean, you're talking 82%, 88%, 86%, you know, in terms of, you know, in favor of our vote, and actually, the 14-year was 79%. So very consistent across the board. And for a survey here, I mean, we have a relatively large response rate, almost, you know, 40%. I mean, we had 45% the first year, 33, 34, and 40% this year, so pretty good response rate. We always ask them where we, you know, they get their information from, and obviously, the majority is the district newsletter we send out, and the rest, Patrick, it looks like you're trailing third, unfortunately.
Second. Oh, yeah, no. Sorry. Family and friends. Type for second.
Family and friends are keen in speed, so. The majority of the people responding to us are typically votes, you know, voting in favor of the budget too, so. The surprising thing, though, this year is first-time voters is up quite a bit, almost 18%, so quite a jump.
One of the demographic, and then Mr. Steinle was younger voters.
Younger voters coming out because of Ms. McLaughlin, maybe, you know, or the small So there, you can obviously see the, why people are voting for, you know, the budget. The single most thing they consider consistently across, you know, is preparing children for careers in college. So we did add a new line, preparing children to become informed citizens on this year, so that actually garnered quite a bit, being the second most. And 7% was really holding the line on taxes, you know, that came out to vote. This is, I'd say, very consistent across, right? The top three things that, to restore our seat support. So here's where we get into, you know, some budgetary things, you know, are voters willing to support a tax increase? If you, you know, the threes, fours, and fives are 75, 80% of the responses, and that's very consistent across the entire four-year history. So with more than 50% in all four years being in the fours and fives, so if we have to go that route, you know, there could be support if we can show that, you know, maybe it is needed to keep things going, which, given the times we're in right now, who knows with this tax? Let's see here. And where are the voters willing to compromise if needed to balance the budget? You can see the strongly agrees versus, you know, reducing athletics, for example, is a big disagree. That was number one. Two was reduce non-mandated academic programs, so. But again, across the, when you look at the four-year history, and this is just showing threes, it is still fairly consistent, what people have been responding to all four years.
It's always so interesting to see that, you know, the thing that voters would be willing to compromise would be the increased walking distances, which would save us, like, $13,000. That's part of our expectation.
Yeah, and, you know, and then again, maybe that's just people don't realize, you know, what the different costs involved in some of this. But right, increased walking distances and increasing class sizes would be.
Of course, we don't have all available options on the reader, so.
No, the full, you have the full survey that was handed out, you know, to read through. The...
I think the, I mean, the nice part about it is when we get the, it's done digitally, so we get the raw data, and we make it available, you know, a week or two after the vote for all of you to go through. And then the published report is nice, because it summarizes everything. You know, most of you are board veterans, so you know there's really no good choices when it comes to the state not meeting its obligation and fully funding public education. So one of the things that, you know, we have, or the board has as a whole, is the idea of advocacy. Those of you that have been part of our advocacy efforts in the past know that typically the ECASB would have a legislative breakfast, and at that breakfast, they would hand out materials that would help us put together our advocacy plan, you know, to go back to our districts and help reach out to our legislators. Recently, Mrs. Custody reached out to Erie County Association of School Boards to ask if there was an intent to do that again, and they indicated that they're not planning on doing that again, that they had the legislative forum in the fall, which they felt like was the opportunity to connect with the legislators. And Dr. Fraser has published the meeting calendar that's forthcoming. So as a board, if you're interested in honing in on a plan relative to advocacy, you know, it might be something to put on a future agenda or a workshop meeting, you know, where we can get a plan together. It seems like the, you know, the focus is on foundation aid, and this is always the time of year where there's some gamesmanship going on with what the budget looks like at the state level. There's been a lot of talk about what it looks like or may look like at the federal level. But I think our goal is to reach out to our legislators and indicate the importance of, you know, funding state aid and making opportunities available for us to balance our budget. So that leads me to the last piece related to this. You all have a copy of our budget development calendar that is in front of you. Mrs. Wazinski did a great job putting this together. Mrs. Bezinski did a great job putting this together. It's pretty comprehensive. You'll see, starting with December 19th, we have our first draft of a budget, excuse me, an 18, 19 budget. And we will call that the program continuation budget. So what is it basically cost expenditure-wise to continue what we're doing moving forward? And then there's several things that are done in-house that you can see our timelines. And then February 13th, we come back to the board meeting publicly and we should have some information from the governor's proposal at that point. We are also looking to declare our tax cap calculation, whether or not we're going to stay compliant with the tax cap calculation, update OCs, utilities, et cetera, all the way down to March 6th, where we'll have our third draft. At that point, we will call that, you know, either additions or reductions. We hope to have for you both of those things to consider, depending upon what the budget allows. You know, that would be program enhancements, program reductions. And then April 10th is when we would ask for that verbal commitment to the budget, you know, barring any need for another meeting, an update on state aid from the state budget. And then April 17th is when you would actually adopt it. And then the budget hearings, May 1st. So the first, the first go-around is next meeting. And again, as everybody, I think, at this table knows, school district budgeting is a lot of speculation and a lot of, what's the word I'm looking for? Assumptions. And we do the best to look into the crystal ball and figure out what next year's expenditures will look like for things like utilities, special education placements, you know, repairs. So we have had, consistently had a conservative approach with that, but we'll get the first glimpse of it in December. And then we'll, the picture will come more into focus as we move forward into the spring. So that's a nice review of the exit poll survey and then leading into the calendar. The last piece about the exit poll is we'll have the opportunity in one of the board meetings in April to actually discuss whether or not you want to continue with the exit poll survey. And then actually, if the answer is yes, look at the tool itself to make any adjustments to it prior to the May budget vote.
I like that summary. Thanks for putting that together. It's really nice to see the comparison over the years.
Yeah, I mean, as you can see, it's surprisingly very consistent, both in, you know, the voter approval rate, the response rate on the survey, you know, it's, it is quite consistent. So it does give you a little bit of a, I think, a feel for the voters and what they're thinking.
Okay. And that's the end of superintendent poll. Thank you.
Okay. We will need a motion for new business then.
I'll make a motion for new business items F1A through E, 2A through H, and 3D.
Have a second.
A second.
Any discussions?
Jean, I think you just want to mention the minutes.
Yeah, I didn't know if it was working. I did mention to Mrs. Bezinski that Mr. Bellisle was at the last meeting and in the list of people who were also, you know, it lists the board and then it says also in attendance. And Mr. Bellisle was conspicuously absent on that list.
Are you willing to sign a document saying you were here?
Well, I just, I mean, we were, we went into executive session to discuss things that involved him. I didn't want it to look like he wasn't involved.
So as long as everyone's okay accepting the minutes with that amendment, we can keep it there.
Good.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All those in favor of approving new business items F1A through E, 2A through H, and 3D, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries six zero. I would like to welcome Melanie McCuskey to our team here at Amherst. We look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
We were, I was just joking about the speech, but if you did prepare one, you're welcome to stand up.
Great. Good opportunity. Thank you.
Welcome. Let's see. Mr. Business Gal, do we have any follow-up action? And we have no executive session tonight, so we can all go home to our families. So we will need a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll make a motion to adjourn. I'm sorry. You can do it. I'll second it.
Motion?
Yeah.
Mr. Reewell?
I'll second it.
Second?
Yep.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everybody, for coming. Appreciate it.